Welcome to the Board of Trustees Meeting for April 8th, 2015. We'll start with a moment of silence and then do the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's Moment of Silence is going to go out to Darrell Gordon, who's a Cincinnati firefighter that lost his life, served 24 years, and also George Brooks, who's 25-year veteran, and he lost his life leading the funeral procession with the Forest Park Police. So let's take a moment of silence for those two individuals, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with motions for consideration, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2015-053, approve the minutes of the regular Board of Trustee meeting held on March 25th, 2015, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2015-053 to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting on March 25th.
I second the motion, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-054, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2015-054 to approve bills for payment.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-055, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending March 31st, 2015.
I move motion 2015-055 to approve the payment of overtime.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes.
Motion 2015-056, approve to hire Sylvia M. Shide as part-time assistant custodian in the police department at an hourly rate of $10 effective April 9th, 2015.
I move motion 2015-056 to approve the hiring of Sylvia M. Shide to be part-time assistant custodian in the police department.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-057, approve the township fiscal officer to complete the Ohio Division of Liquor Control forms, not requesting a hearing for the transfer of and issuance of a liquor license permit for Chandler's Burgers Bistro LLC, DBA Chandler's Burger Bistro.
I move motion 2015-057 to approve that the township fiscal officer complete the necessary liquor control forms, as noted.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-058, authorize the township administrator to sign on behalf of the Board of Trustees a letter of support to maintain state funding of Ohio's soil and water conservation districts to Representative Ryan Smith, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
I move motion 2015-058 to authorize the administrator to sign on behalf of the Board for the Ohio's soil and water.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-059, authorize the township administrator to sign on behalf of the Board of Trustees a letter to Electronic Commerce Link, Inc., providing notice of non-renewal of IT services effective May 31st, 2015, fulfilling the terms of the contract.
I've moved motion 2015-059 to authorize the administrator to sign a letter of non-renewal with Electronic Commerce Link.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-060, approve the proclamation declaring Saturday, April 11th, 2015, Costopoulos Family, Delhi Chili Day, and Delhi Township.
I move motion 2015-060 to approve the proclamation declaring Saturday, April the 11th, 2015, Costopoulos Family, Delhi Chili Day, and Delhi Township.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes. And we do have the proclamation that anyone, Tom Costopoulos, anyone that wants to join him from his family are more than welcome to maybe at the podium.
That's all you. That's who you want.
All right, the Board of Trustees wants to present you with this proclamation for the Costopoulos Family, Delhi Chili Day, and Delhi Township, April 11th, 2015. Whereas Jim and Chris Costopoulos opened Delhi Chili in 1963, which has become a familiar landmark in Delhi Township at the corner of Delhi Pike and Greenwell Avenue, and whereas Tom Costopoulos and his sister-in-law, Deena Costopoulos, became managing partners after assisting with running the family-owned business for many years, and whereas the Costopoulos Family announced the closing of Delhi Chili. The last day of the restaurant will be open for business will be on Saturday, April 11th, 2015, and whereas the Costopoulos Family wishes to acknowledge the countless number of dedicated employees who contributed to the success of the restaurant while serving their customers and residents of Delhi for 52 years, and whereas the Delhi Township Board of Trustees and fiscal officer wish to recognize the Costopoulos Family for their outstanding service to the community and for being a longtime contributor to the local economy for over a half a century. Now therefore be it resolved that Saturday, April 11th, 2015, be and is hereby declared Costopoulos Family, Delhi Chili Day, and Delhi Township, adopted by means of motion 2015-060 at the regular meeting of Delhi Township Board of Trustees on April 8th, 2015. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want me to say something, huh?
Yeah. Just wanted to get a quick photo.
Oh, okay.
And then feel free. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. Feel free if you want to say anything.
Well, I thought of everything to say on the way in from the House, and when you get up here, you totally forget what you're gonna say. But the biggest thing that I want to thank is Delhi, the customers that we had all these years, been so tremendous. In the last two, three weeks since we made the announcement that we're gonna close on April the 11th, the turnout has been so great that nobody realized how much it was and how much it was gonna be missed. And that restaurant meant a great deal to our families for all this time, you know, my dad, mom, and my brother, and the rest of the family. And I'd kinda like to thank Delhi for that, and also the employees and everything else and what we're doing. And without our kids helping last two weeks, we would never have made it to where we are today. We totally appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Trustee Klug.
Nothing tonight.
I just wanted to mention and commend the eight people that volunteered their time for the fire department. We had four honor guard, four firefighters that actually volunteered to cover Cincinnati firefighters when they attended the service of Darrell Gordon. Just want to commend them, obviously, to take time, go to another station, and do that just shows the family unit, not only our own fire department has, but throughout the community. And I know that goes the same for police. I know a few officers were pretty sad about what happened with the funeral procession. So just want to commend them and recognize that they're a close-knit family. Report from the fiscal officer.
The Financial Advisory Board will have their next meeting on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, at 5:30 PM in the Township Administration Building. The public opening and the reading of the names for applications received by the deadline of April 7th, 2015, at 4:30 PM for active and interim depositories in connection with the five-year designation of depositories beginning May 31st, 2015, in accordance with the applicable provisions of Chapter 135 of the Ohio Revised Code. So now we'll go ahead and open up the envelopes of the banks that submitted. And the last one is Huntington Bank. So now we'll go ahead and we'll review those, these banks, and in two weeks, we'll go ahead and make a decision who's going to be taking care of our banking needs on an everyday basis.
And can we have the motion, Mr. Looby?
Motion 2015-061, approve the referral of the applications received to the fiscal officer for review.
I move motion 2015-061 to approve the referral of the applications to the fiscal officer.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes. Next, we do have a public hearing for Public Works, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2015-062, approve the reopening and continuation of the public hearings from March 11th and 25th, 2015, for assessments on sidewalks, sidewalk repairs performed.
I move motion 2015-062 to approve the reopening of the public hearing for Public Works on sidewalks.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Mr. Ripinger, anything to add?
Most of the people are paid for last year's assessments.
Okay.
They showed up, but if you haven't received any phone calls, ring the lady.
Thank you. Any public comment on the Public Works public hearing? I don't have anyone signed in for that purpose. All right, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2015-063, approve the closing of the public hearing for assessments on sidewalks, sidewalk repairs performed in 2014.
I move motion 2015-063 to approve the closing of the public hearing for the assessment of sidewalks and sidewalk repairs.
Second the motion.
All those in favor? Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have reports from department heads. We'll start with our Parks Department, Josh Torbeck.
Thank you. I got two quick announcements. We're now on Twitter at @DelhiParks. We've been using it for about a couple of weeks now. We'll be announcing field closures, new programs, events going on the park. We'll be doing a bio on new employees, so look out for that, there'll be some interesting ones. General Park News, future projects, work going on the park, so it'll be a good resource for getting information about the parks. Second, I just wanted to thank Tropical Foliage and Dale Lutz, they donated 400 daffodils. I'm sure you've seen them throughout the parks, township property, they look beautiful. We appreciate it, it's been a pleasant surprise so far, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we have a report from Administrator Landrum.
Yes, thank you. Wanted to make everybody aware of our township website. A lot of the information on our plan, plan for the Pike, our economic, strategic economic development, redevelopment plan that we're doing, in the process of, a lot of the information, of course, has been on Facebook, our Facebook page at @DelhiTownshipOhio under administration, but here on our website, when you log in, go to delhi.oh.us, on the left-hand side, you'll see the economic development link, and when you press on that, this is what comes up. And all the information that you find on the Facebook is here, dealing with economic development, the video where, the week where we did the economic development presentation, well, I guess that was just last, last time, that's on here, so if you want a link to the actual video, that's on YouTube. So a lot of information is right here, all the handouts, all the frequently asked questions, all that can be found right here, and of course, on Facebook as well. And that was just to lead me to help plan the future of Delhi Pike. This next meeting, April 29th, at 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM, immediately right after the trustee meeting, we'll have to be short and sweet, next meeting, but it'd be at the lodge, so we welcome all to attend. And there's gonna be flyers everywhere, Facebook everywhere, so please help us spread the word, all are invited.
Thank you. Mr. Looby, reading of the resolutions.
Resolution 2015-038, resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the township by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
And discussion on this resolution.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-039, resolution ordering final assessment amounts against abutting property owners for the construction, repair, and maintenance of sidewalk and driveway apron improvements along various township streets, order performed in connection with the Delhi Township Street Rehabilitation and Repair Project 2014-A, following notice and hearing, establishing payment terms for the assessments in accordance with Revised Code 5543.10, and its policy and procedures, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the resolution.
And discussion on the resolution.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with the second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-040, resolution accepting the transfer of 18 800 MHz radios and equipment for continued use by the fire department from Hamilton County, authorizing the township administrator to execute necessary documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with the second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-041, resolution accepting the transfer of 40 800 MHz radios and equipment for continued use by the police department from Hamilton County, authorizing the township administrator to execute necessary documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
And discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with the second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-042, resolution entering into collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Township Firefighters Association, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of the resolution.
And discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with the second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-043, resolution amending the position description of Human Resource Director and Article 12 of the Delhi Township amended and restated summary of policies dated January 1st, 2014, updating the position title and the staffing levels and pay rates exhibit, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
Yes, with the change, actually with the retirement of Ms. Eichsted, we just made a few minor changes in the position description, updating the educational and experience requirements, and changing the title from Human Resource Director to Human Resource Manager, but other than that, everything else, the same pay range, all that, so just very minor changes, but which caused us to update the job description, and including the pay rate, staffing and pay rates, just to change the title on there. Again, nothing else changed as far as the pay range.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with the second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-044, resolution entering into an amended and restated broker services agreement with Highland Group, Inc., for benefit consulting services, ratifying the appointment of Highland Group, Inc. as its broker of record, authorizing the township administrator to execute the agreement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Landrum?
Yeah, this is more or less a renewal of the contract with, with Highland, the agreement. If you recall last year when we tried to go partly self-insured and went through all that fiasco, Highland stood right beside us until the very end when we had withdrawal from the one process because it wasn't going to work, and they got us, were still able to get us the deal that they did with the carrier, so we were very grateful that they really did a good job, they really proved themselves, because we had just switched to them about the year and a half or two ago, so we're very pleased with their work. And this is an update of the timeframe, and there is one change because of a change in vendors, where we changed from United Healthcare to Anthem in the way in which we get paid. They haven't changed their rates, but Anthem forces them to more or less get paid a certain amount, they won't change it. It's based on, I think, a percentage instead of an exact dollar amount, so we are setting up a wellness program within Highland as well, but they've maintained the same cost per employee for us.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispense with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispense with the second reading? Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next, we have citizen comments, we do have one citizen that wants to comment, so Tony Capel, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Put on my first hat of the President Delhi Business Association, just wanted to bring some information to the township and also to the residents. We are doing a lot of changes on the website for the Delhi Business Association, if you get a chance, go out and visit the website. We're trying to represent it more for the community, so that they can go and find information about businesses. Perhaps they need a plumber, a realtor, you can get on the Delhi Business Association website, we have them categorized, just like the old Pink Pages used to be, makes it a lot easier to find the businesses that really represent Delhi and are a part of the Delhi Business Association. So if you're looking for somebody, business-wise, go to the website, it's big differences, big changes, and I think it'll really help you out. If you're a business in Delhi and you're not a member of the Delhi Business Association, we invite you to check out the website, and if you have any questions or would like to join, you can email me at mc62homers@fuse.net, or they can give me a call at 379-4177. Always looking for new members and businesses that are concerned about the community. Flip over and put on my J.B. Yeager baseball coach hat, once again this year, J.B. Yeager is happy to be working with Delhi Park and hosting two 11-year-old baseball tournaments, Memorial Day and Fourth of July weekend. I'm happy to report, we have over 32 teams for each weekend, which will mean we'll be bringing over 5,000 people into Delhi Park for those weekends from all over Cincinnati. We go as north as Mason, north area of Mason, all the way out on the east side, and a lot of teams coming up from Kentucky this year, so we're happy to be a part in showing off Delhi Park and how beautiful it is to all the people coming in for the tournaments. And also, as a part of that, we always are looking for tournament sponsors, so if any of the businesses in Delhi would like to be a tournament sponsor, they can get in touch with me, 379-4177, we'd be happy to get their name up and as a sponsor at Delhi Park. Thank you very much.
You referenced the DBA website, why don't you give the web address on that?
That'd be a great idea. It is delhibusiness.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Announcement of community events, Mr. Looby.
Delhi Historical Society Program, History of the Cincinnati Enquirer, will be Monday, April 13th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. It'll be at the Delhi Park Lodge at 5125 Foley Road. Jeff Seuss, Enquirer librarian and author, will talk about the history of the Cincinnati Enquirer and many of the newspapers published in Cincinnati dating back to the 1800s. Please visit delhihistoricalsociety.org to learn more. The Western Wildlife Corridor, 9th Annual Wildflower Festival, will be Friday, April 17th, 2015, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, will be at Mount St. Joseph University at 5701 Delhi Road. This family event will feature a wildflower plant sale, handcrafted items for sale, a painting class, displays by local environmental organizations, and activities for the children. To learn more, call Rebecca at 859-512-1983, or visit westernwildlifecorridor.org. The Delhi Branch Library Program, World War II Cincinnati, From the Front Lines to the Home Front, with Robert Ernest Miller, will be Tuesday, April 21st, 2015, at 7:00 PM. It will be at the Delhi Branch Library at 595 Foley Road. Contact Mary Beth Bristol at 369-6019, or by email at marybeth.bristol at cincinnatilibrary.org to learn more. The Western Wildlife Corridor, 11th Annual Flower Thon, will be Saturday, April 25th, 2015. You can register for half a day or a whole day. This event will start with breakfast and a hike at Emshoff Woods, followed by a hike on Bender Mountain, and ending with a lasagna dinner and presentation at Earth Connection on the campus of Mount St. Joe University. To register, contact Tim Sisson at 922-2104, or by email at tssisson@fuse.net, or visit The Bailey 25th Anniversary Celebration, thanks to the community, will be Sunday, April 26th, 2015, at 3:00 PM. It will be at the Mount St. Joseph University Theater at 5701 Delhi Road. Bailey invites the community to a special concert featuring Nancy James and Channel 12 WKRC's Bob Herzog, Pat Emmett's Big Band, and ventriloquist Danny Baker. Event proceeds will benefit Bailey residents and Adult Day members in need. For ticket and event information, please call 347-4040, or visit baileylife.org. Plan the Pike, Delhi Township Strategic Redevelopment Plan Kickoff Meeting, will be Wednesday, April 29th, 2015, will be from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. It'll be at the Glenn Carter Lodge in Delhi Park at 5125 Foley Road. We want to hear from you about what you want to see the Delhi Corridor become, and what we can do to improve your experience there today. Please join us at this very important kickoff meeting. Please call 922-3111, or email planthepike@delhi.oh.us to learn more. Another announcements, enrollment is currently open for the Delhi Township Parks and Recreation Summer Programs, including a variety of campus and programs for children ages 4 through 12. The enrollment form and additional information can be found on the homepage of the Delhi Township's website, at delhi.oh.us. The registration deadline is May 29th, 2015. Please call the park office at 451-3300 with questions. Upcoming events, to assist you with your spring cleaning, the Delhi Township will host the annual Cleanup Delhi Day event on Saturday, May 9th, 2015, from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM at the Delhi Senior Community Center at 647 Ebb Road. This free event will take place rain or shine, and is open to Delhi Township residents only. Proof of residency will be required when items are dropped off for recycling. Residents must be in line by 1:00 PM in order to participate. To learn more about this event, including a list of acceptable and non-acceptable items, please see the event flyer on the homepage of the Township's website, or contact Dan Ryan by phone at 451-3300, or email at dryan@delhi.oh.us. To coincide with the Delhi Cleanup Day event, the Delhi Business Association and Delhi Civic Association will co-sponsor a free paper shredding event for residents and business owners on Saturday, May 9th, 2015, at C.O. Harrison School on Ebb Road. The shred truck will be available for onsite shredding of documents between the hours of 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. If you have questions about this event, please contact Marty Schultes at 347-0700 between, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or email
There is need for executive session, Mr. Looby, can we have the motion?
Motion 2015-064, to retire to executive session to consider the employment of public employees.
I move motion 2015-064, oh yeah, to retire to executive session to consider the employment of public employees.
Second the motion.
Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klug?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes our regular meeting for tonight. The next regular scheduled Delhi Township Board of Trustees meeting will be Wednesday, April 29th, 2015. Thank you for attending, and have a good night.